Time having arrived, it's 2:00 P.M. on Thursday, June 26, 2025. We are in the Mayor Bill Copeland Executive Boardroom on the first floor of 45 Garden Road, Manning Tower, Brockton, Mass., 02301. This is a regular session of the Board of Commissioners. This is also a public hearing and all are invited to attend in person or on Zoom. Also included in our agenda is the Hearing of Visitors section. Please note that all of our board meetings are recorded. This meeting has been posted at City Hall and also on our website. We are in compliance with the 48-hour notice. I am now going to call a roll for forum. Tim Solomon Chair is here. Janet Trask?
Here.
Carol Roberts?
Here.
We do have a, we have a, this is a board of five, three as a forum. Most of our monthly meetings are held on the last Thursday of the month unless there's a need for a special. That will be posted. Some of our members are here, some are in person, and some are on Zoom. Because of this, all of our votes will be done by a roll call. You are hereby given notice that the members of the Brockton Housing Authority are called to meet in a regular session on Thursday, June 26, 2025, at 2:00 P.M. In the Mayor Bill Copeland Executive Boardroom, Manning Tower, 45 Garden Road, first floor, Brockton, Mass., 02301. Going to read out the COVID-19 memo from the Governor. Due to the ongoing COVID-19 pandemic and state of emergency, on March 12, 2020, Governor Baker issued an executive order temporarily suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law. General Laws, Chapter 38, Section 20. Pursuant to the order, public parties are temporarily, from the open meeting laws requirements, that meetings be held in public places, open and physically accessible to the public, so long as, as measures are taken to ensure public access to the party's deliberations through adequate and alternative means. That was extended to April 1, 2021, extended again April 1, 2022, extended again to July 1, 2022, extended again to July 15, 2022, extended again to March 31, 2023 by Governor Baker, and to March 31, 2025 by Governor Haley, also extended to June 30, 2027 by Governor Haley. This meeting slash hearing of the Brockton Housing Authority will be held in person at the location provided on this notice. Members of the public are welcome to attend this in-person meeting. Please note that while an option for remote attendance and our participation is being provided, as a courtesy to the public, the meeting slash hearing will not be suspended or terminated if technological problems interrupt the virtual broadcast, unless otherwise required by law. Members of the public with particular interest in any specific item on this agenda should make plans for in-person versus virtual attendance accordingly. The public is invited to view, get, or listen to the meeting via phone, computer, laptop, or tablet. To do so, download the Zoom Cloud Meeting App in any app store or at www.zoom.us at 2:00 P.M. on March 27, 2025. Click on Join a Meeting and enter meeting ID number 89562614475, pass code 696418, or use the link http://zoom.us/i/89562614475. You may also join by calling conference line at 1-646-558-8656 at 2:00 P.M. On June 26, 2025, and enter the meeting ID number 89562614475, pass code 696418, followed by the pound sign. The Board Chair will instruct participants on appropriate time and manner of public comment during this meeting. If you could all rise, if you can, remove your hats and silence your phones. On the Pledge of Allegiance. The Pledge of Allegiance to the Black United States of America, and to the Republic where we stand, one nation under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all. I have a motion, roll call, you know?
Commissioner Trask?
Here.
Commissioner Roberts?
Here.
Mr. Chairman?
Here. And I just wanted to mention that the Executive Director of the Housing Authority, Tom Tebow, was also present here. Item two, approval of the minutes of the special meeting of April 23, 2025. Item A in your packets, Mr. Tebow?
You will see that there are four sets of minutes to approve for this meeting. That's Mrs. Esposito has been working on these since Mrs. Keating's accident. We had three meetings in May, so we should go through them one by one. The minutes of the special meeting of April 23, 2025 have been reviewed by me, and I found them to be in order, and I would recommend them to be approved as written.
We need a motion and a second. Item two?
So moved. Second?
A motion has been made by Commissioner Carol Roberts, seconded by Commissioner Janet Trask. Motion is to approve the minutes of the special meeting of April 23, 2025, as written. Any discussion? Or questions on the motion? Hearing done. Roll call, Mr. Tebow?
Commissioner Trask?
Yes.
Commissioner Roberts?
Yes.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes. Motion carried. Item three, approval of the minutes of the special meeting of May 19, 2025. Item B in your packets, Mr. Tebow?
This was the single-issue meeting regarding the selection of an equity investor and lender for the Campolo Phase One project. I reviewed the minutes and have found them to be in order. I would recommend that they be.
We need a motion and a second, item three?
So moved. Second?
A motion has been made by Commissioner Janet Trask, seconded by Commissioner Carol Roberts. Motion is to approve the minutes of the special meeting of May 19, 2025, as written. Any discussion or questions on the motion? Hearing done. Roll call, Mr. Tebow?
Commissioner Trask?
Yes.
Commissioner Roberts?
Yes.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes. Motion carries. Item four, approval of the minutes of the regular meeting of May 22, 2025. Item C in your packets, Mr. Tebow?
I have reviewed the minutes of May 22, 2025. I have found them to be in order, and I would recommend that they be approved, as written.
We need a motion and a second?
So moved. Second?
A motion has been made by Commissioner Carol Roberts, seconded by Commissioner Janet Trask. Motion is to approve the minutes of the regular meeting of May 22, 2025, as written. Any discussion or questions on the motion? Hearing done, roll call, Tebow?
Commissioner Trask?
Yes.
Commissioner Roberts?
Yes.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes. Motion carries. Item five, approval of the minutes of the annual meeting of May 30, 2025. Item D in your packets, Mr. Tebow?
As Mr. Chairman has said, this was the annual meeting. The two major items there were the recognition of longevity for residents, the employees, and then the reelection of officers for the Housing Authority. I reviewed them and found them to be in on, in order.
We need a motion and a second, item five?
So moved. Second?
A motion has been made by Commissioner Janet Trask, seconded by Commissioner Carol Roberts. Motion is to approve the minutes of the annual meeting of May 30, 2025, as written. Any discussion or question on the motion? Hearing done, roll call?
Commissioner Trask?
Yes.
Commissioner Roberts?
Yes.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes. Motion carry. Item six, Hearing of Visitors. Hearing of Visitors, any member of the public is invited to speak before the Board. Visitors wishing to be heard must sign in with their name, address, and contact number before the start of each meeting. Each visitor will be allowed three minutes to speak on each subject. The Board will take any issues under advisement and respond at a later date. Total time for Hearing of Visitors will be limited to 15 minutes, which will be strictly enforced. There will be no passing your three minutes to another. All visitors can be heard on agenda items only. Do we have any Hearing of Visitors?
Mr. Chairman, no one has signed in in the room. I don't know if anybody via Zoom wants to be heard. Yes, ask Shafel if you could identify yourself and... We, you're muted, we can't hear you if you're speaking. I don't know if you're having technical difficulties, Mr. Chairman. I would recommend that you move on, and if at some time they can come in and speak, we can revisit that if you like.
Yeah.
Okay. I don't know if it's Mr. or Mrs. Shafel, hurry. We'll have to schedule you for the next meeting. Item seven, Correspondence, Mr. Tebow?
There is no correspondence, Mr. Chairman.
Item eight, approval of the bills for the regular meeting of June 26, 2025. Commissioner Roberts?
Yes, I reviewed the bills with Mr. Tebow and Tanya, and there were a few questions, but they were answered, and I move to accept the bills as they are.
We need a second, Janet?
Second, sorry, second.
A motion has been made by Commissioner Carol Roberts, seconded by Commissioner Janet Trask. Motion is to approve the bills, the regular meeting of June 26, 2025, as written. Any questions or discussion on the motion?
No.
Hearing done, roll call, Mr. Tebow?
Commissioner Trask?
Yes.
Commissioner Roberts?
Yes.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, motion carried. Item nine, Appointment of Affordable Housing LIHTC Manager, item F in your packets, Mr. Tebow?
If I could ask Mr. Luff to speak on this, please?
Thank you, Mr. Tebow. As the Board knows, the Affordable Housing Scattered Site Department controls 100 scattered site units for the Housing Authority and the Southeastern Mass Affordable Housing Corporation under contract with them, and the Montello Affordable Housing Corporation under contract with them. This is a difficult portfolio because it's scattered throughout the city. With the resignation of Monica Fuentes, we have been searching for somebody to fill this role. In the meantime, Bruna Campbell was filling it because she had held this role previously, two positions ago. But since then, she's received several promotions and has a very full plate. But she's, she will be the supervisor of this position. After a number of rounds of advertising and interviews, we have selected Dylan Leonard, who's before you today. Mr. Leonard worked with us last summer, part-time, while he was in college. I worked for Mr. Sheedy, who's on the Zoom. By all accounts, Dylan did a great job working for us over at Crescent Court. He's a college graduate, very recent, just in May, Plymouth State. I played football all four years, which will stand him in good stead because he'll be traveling around to all of these different developments, so he'll have to have his running shoes on. I've attached both his resume and his writing sample. We asked for a writing sample because he'll have to be communicating both with the residents and with senior staff on, in the SMAC Board on different issues. So we recommend that the Board appoint Dylan Leonard as Affordable Housing Light Technician.
If I could, I'd just add to that. We have had a discussion, Mr. Leonard and I, about the importance of the position, the work ethic items that are important to us. I go back to that football career. In football, you're one of 22 or one of 11 on the field at any time. You have to do your job, as you know from Bill Belichick, and that, that does pass through. It's the same thing in any part of life, you have to do your job. And to do your job, you have to be here, and you have to work well with others. You have to be a good teammate. So my impression of Mr. Leonard during our discussions has been that he will be able to fulfill all three of those, number one, to show up to work. And he will be working with Bruna Campbell. Bruna has shown a very strong proclivity, I don't know if that's the right word, ability to train and pass along the knowledge that she has had. And I believe Mr. Leonard will be able to receive that working there. And I have high hopes. He's a young man, which is good because it'd be nice to see you retiring from half 140 years and have a long, successful career.
Forty years?
He's 22, that'd be early.
Oh, yeah.
Mr. DeChristopher, how long have you been here?
He's waiting for his table.
So, but, and, and the reason I say that, Mr. Chairman, is Mr. DeChristopher's experience here over those years is second to none. He was here when the building you live in, Commissioner Roberts, was built.
Yeah.
He knows how it was built, and that's what I'm talking about, you, the, the history of someone has that.
What an old man he is.
The value that you get. As you know, Mr. Sergi was here for 37 years, 15 years as a Board Member and 22 as a Executive Director, and that made him, his breadth of knowledge was much wider than. So, experience does count. To get experience, you have to start, and you have to work.
We need a motion and a second, item nine?
Yep, so moved. Second?
A motion has been made by Commissioner Carol Roberts, seconded by Commissioner Janet Trask. Motion is to appoint Dylan Leonard of Brockton Mass. To the position of Affordable Housing LIHTC Asset Manager, effective June 30, 2025, at a step-one rate of $59,741 per annum. Any questions or discussion on the motion?
It's a great resume, Dylan, and your sample of writing is terrific. And you're young, so of course, that's great. And you're also from Brockton, which, what can we say? But anyhow, we're, we're delighted to have you.
Thank you.
In session.
Go ahead, Carol.
Okay, no, I was just reading what he wrote here, and I think that's...
Thank you. Really appreciate it, thank you.
Yeah.
We need a roll call?
I am a big fan of this guy, so I read a lot of his stuff, so this is why.
So, so the sample itself is from my ethics class over the, oh, the spring, and that was my final bit from the ethics class.
Yeah, you wasted it.
Thanks. Did well in the class, so.
Thank you, yeah.
Roll call, Mr. Tebow?
Commissioner Trask?
Yes.
Commissioner Roberts?
Yes.
And Mr. Chairman?
Yes. Motion carried. Welcome aboard, thank you. Congratulations.
I'll remember you being hired.
Yes, we'll all remember it, and we're sorry for the intrusion.
And you're gonna wait until...
Yeah, I got a letter to read off, we have a proposal. You gotta still...
That was disturbing.
Yes.
Item 10, Appointment of Maintenance Assistant Foreman. Item G in your packets, Mr. Tebow?
If I could ask Mr. Luff, please.
Thank you, Mr. Tebow. Members of the Board, before you is Joe Kugler, who is a, currently a Lead Mechanic with the Housing Authority. Lead Mechanics are mechanics who have been deemed to be worthy of being appointed Leads as a, moving towards a supervisory role. Joe's been with us since 2014. Before that, he worked as a Maintenance Specialist at Harvard Vanguard. He's taken all the trainings that we offer. He's a Certified Maintenance Apartment Technician. He holds a Hoisting License, so he could drive a Bobcat, a Terrex, whatever other type of machine we need. He recently got his Class A CDL license, so he could drive the dump truck, pull the, the front end rotor with it. He's well-regarded by his peers. Right now, his job is down the barn, working on our machines, getting the, all the snow blowers, we'll say, ready for the winter, or making sure all our trucks get their oil changed, and everything is up to speed. When, are you, you're not still on call?
I'm not.
When he was on call, he would be the one that people called about heating systems, the other maintenance men. Joe does great about reading the technical manuals and being very sure about... Because when there's no heat in the middle of winter, people, they want to get that. Yes, they do. So it was a tough competition. We had some other candidates who were very strong, but Joe was the most senior person here and under our contract, and people are equal seniority for theirs. So, happy to put Joe before you to be appointed as an assistant working for him.
If I could add to that, I've known Mr. Kugler since he's come. He is a quiet person, but he has the respect of all of his coworkers. They have come to me in the past years and during times and said that he should have more responsibility, that he's very knowledgeable, that he's helped me out, that he's a team player. He shows up to work, which is important.
Big loss.
On time, early, very well... But the, what I'm saying is, you know, to be a foreman or an assistant foreman, you have to have the respect for the people you work with, and he does. He's added as a coworker, and they have suggested in the past that he be elevated.
There was a very...
Thank you.
We need a motion and a second, item 10?
So moved. Second?
A motion has been made by Commissioner Janet Trask, seconded by Commissioner Carol Roberts. Motion is to appoint Mr. Joseph Fuller of Northeastern to the position of Maintenance Assistant Working Foreman, effective June 30, 2025, at a 2025 step-one rate of $39.49 per hour. Any questions or discussion on the motion?
Where's Peterson School, Joseph?
Oh, the one I went to is on Westwood, but there's a few more locations like Woburn.
Ah. Yeah, it's a very impressive resume also.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Roll call, Mr. Tebow?
Commissioner Trask?
Yes.
Commissioner Roberts?
Yes.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes. Motion carried. Welcome aboard.
Thank you.
Let me read this letter off of both of you.
Thank you.
I'm just trying to save time, doing it together. Usually I do it one at a time. You can sit down.
Oh, yeah.
I used to say this by memory, and sometimes I forget things, I mistake certain things. So for now, when I read this statement, "This is for all new employees who transfer to different departments or promotions, or for people who come back to the BHA. Let me thank you for wanting to work for the Brockton Housing Authority, one of the best jobs in Brockton, in my opinion. We own 2,100 apartments in Brockton and administer over 2,500 rental assistant aid vouchers. This is not an easy job. We, the Board of Commissioners and the executive team, put our residents first. They are our number-one priority. Without them, we don't need me, this Board, the buildings, or the staff. Please remember to treat our residents with respect. We also say that anyone can have a bad day, be a little sharp or argumentative for no apparent reason. If this should happen to you, please smile and walk away. Don't argue. We can all strive to be a better person. If you can do this, you will go far in this agency. I am very glad to meet you and welcome you to the team. The Board meets here in this room once a month on many different subjects. Please feel free to attend if one of these items is of interest to you. And again, to both of you, welcome aboard."
Thank you. Congratulations.
Mr. Chairman, thank you. Thank the gentleman to represent our department.
The torture room?
Thank you.
Yeah, yeah. You can read.
Item 11, approval of contract extensions, Integrated Pest Services, Exhibit H in your packets, Mr. Tebow?
Can I have Mrs. Bruce come up? Sit here. This is, you hired Susan Bruce a couple of months ago. This is the first time she comes in front of the Board at the procurement officer.
Hi.
Hello.
Why are you today?
Well?
Good.
If you could speak on the, we know...
So what you have in front of you is a request to renew for the last term Integrated Pest Management Contract with Burgess Pest Services. They've held the contract for the past four years when it was originally bid. It was a three-year contract with the option of two one-year renewals. This will be the last renewal for this contract, and we'll put it out to bid in a year.
Wow. Patient?
Thank you.
He is very efficient and very knowledgeable in these areas.
Which is good to know. Welcome aboard.
Thank you.
We need a motion and a second, item 11?
So moved. Second?
A motion has been made by Commissioner Carol Roberts, seconded by Commissioner Janet Trask. Motion is to approve a one-year contract extension with Burgess Pest Management of Westbridge, Otter Mass, extending the coverage contract through September 1, 2026. Any discussion or questions on the motion?
Did you say this is the last renewal?
Yes.
Why is that?
It was originally bid as a three-year contract with two one-year renewals, and it has been in place for the past four years. This will be the fifth year, and by law, you can't have a contract longer than five years.
Oh, interesting, thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you, come back, Janet, and rebid.
They can, actually.
Oh, I see, I see.
Any other questions or discussion? Roll call, Mr. Tebow, item 11?
Commissioner Trask?
Yes.
Commissioner Roberts?
Yes.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes. Motion carried.
Thank you.
Item 12, Review of April 2025 Financial Comparative, Exhibit I in your packets?
If I could ask Mr. Patient to speak on it, please?
Thank you. So you have the first four months of our fiscal year in front of you. Operationally, we're doing fine, I'm not concerned. The water and sewer bills are a contributing factor to the AMP's deficits, meaning AMP 1 and AMP 2, which are our federal programs. But we're working with the city of Brockton, the Water Department, to resolve the issue with the, the water bills. And so, we, we involved our energy consultant, Richard Sissick. He was able to dig down deep into the water bills for the past three years, and they were able to find some, some issues. And because of the work they did, the detail work that they did, it looks like there's a sizable amount of money that the city owes us. We did meet, have a meeting with some of the representatives of the Water Department back in March, so they seem to be open to looking at what Mr. Sissick has, has put together. So it's quite extensive, the information that he was able to, to come together. And it's, it's quite a patch, so.
It's a, what, the number we're talking about is in the $600,000 range.
Wow, yeah. Do they build like I have?
Yes, yeah, they all have water. Yeah, it's been an issue that, that the water meters aren't reading correctly. So evidently, it's been an issue for about two or three years.
It's been an issue for about 25 years. It's been an issue for about twenty-five years and we've reconciled before and it's just become a problem again. Uh, so it's, it's, but I do, you know, we have met with, uh, D P A, the D C W Commissioner Hill. Uh, he's been very open, done a lot of work. Uh, we're now going to be working with his business manager to, to get the bills adjusted.
Yep, okay. These deficits of wall of water?
Uh, water is a major factor. And with regard to AMP two, the electricity, because we had such a tough winter. Um, we've paid a hundred thousand dollars more, um, this fiscal year up to this point in electricity for AMP two. Then we did, uh, last fiscal year. So, um, and there's been some capital projects unforeseen. And that was about a hundred and eight thousand dollars on AMP two, so.
Then, then there's the, um, is it Gatsby sixty-eight or seventy-four or seventy-five? And so there's general accounting standard board. Uh, rules that say that we have to put on the books and I'm sure it applies to the school department also. An amount of money that we would have to pay out every employee for their pension and how much it would cost for their health, health insurance. For as long as they would live. So we have an actuary do a study and say, okay, Tom Tibo, sixty-three years old. If he were to retire today, he would be expected to live to seventy-seven. Therefore, we would have to pay his health insurance for fourteen years. For Dylan, it would be forty years, you know, it, it, whatever they would, uh, do there. And there's been a huge fluctuation in that from last year to this year. So there's a number on the books that is not a cash number, but it restricts some of our reserves. Um, in, in certain cases. Um, so it, it just lowers that cash number. Um, similar to the concept of depreciation. I have a appreciation. They say, hey, you lost sixty thousand dollars on this building last year. The building's actually worth more, but they depreciate it as a capital asset. I can't go much further than that because I'm not an accountant. I don't agree with how they do it, uh. Because if we close.
As long as he does.
Yeah, no, no, he, he knows the books.
Yes.
But if we close tomorrow, that means the government's out of business. And it doesn't matter how much we owe people.
Wow.
So, and we're not closing tomorrow.
No, I don't.
And that's the contributing factor as to why the employee benefits so high is. Uh, as Mister Tibo had said, it's, it's a pension calculation that's based on an actuary number. Uh, it's not based on the contributions that, uh, the employees are making, so. Paper transaction is what they call.
We need a motion and a second, item twelve?
So moved.
Second.
A motion has been made by Commissioner Janet Trask, seconded by Commissioner Carol Roberts. Motion is to accept the financial comparatives for the period ending April thirty, twenty twenty-five and put on file. Any discussion or questions on the motion?
So when it says balance to spend, what does that exactly mean?
Balance to spend?
Balance to spend means, so we budgeted, say, a hundred thousand dollars for something and we've spent fifty thousand. So for the rest of the year, we have fifty thousand to spend. So in some cases, you'll see there's more than enough to go the rest of the year. In other cases, it's less. So that's when we sit down month to month using these. We might say, it's usually maintenance. We say, hey, maintenance, you gotta back off on some things here. Uh, if there are any, uh, 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 special projects that we have, we, we won't do those. Type of things. But every line has a balance to spend if it's an expense. And we also have on income lines, balance that we expect to bring in. Um, so you'll see we're over income in some places, un, uh, under income in, in other places.
Any other questions or discussion? Here is not roll call, Mister Tibo?
Commissioner Trask?
Yes.
Commissioner Roberts?
Yes.
And Mister Chairman?
Yes. Motion carries. Item thirteen, Executive Directors Report. Mister Tibo?
So I am going to do my, um, Executive Directors Report this month. Uh, uh, orally. So, just to speak on a couple of things, as you know, uh, in her role as compliance officer, one of her responsibilities. Campbell is to set up training to make sure that we're in compliance. Everybody understands what we're supposed to be doing. Um, over the last month, um, this week, uh, was it this week we did V A W? This week, V A W, Violence Against Women Act, a very complicated, um, legal responsibility upon all of our. Um. All of our, uh, staff. So if someone brings something to a frontline, uh, receptionist and says something. That, you know, that might have to do with violence against women, what might have a, a ramification, they should know about that. So. Uh, Bruna has set up that training. It was done by Manette Donovan and it was, uh, well attended and it went, went very well. We also had Nan McKay come in. They are a national firm. They did training on recertifications. Uh, and we have an issue with recertifications. It's a small issue, but it's, it comes to the fact that most of the people we have. Doing recertifications now are new. And I'm talking about an average of less than a year.
Yeah.
For entire department. So, uh, we did some training on that, which was very complicated. And then we had a two-day, uh, training at Stonehill for all the directors and leadership. And we had a Jim Tell from C M, C N P Partners come in. Uh, it was a fabulous training, a very, very accomplished, uh, man. Um, he got very accomplished. I don't want to get into his bio, but it was, uh, it, it. Very, uh, beneficial training. Uh, I also just want to let you know we're getting very, very close on Campello. I told you in the last meeting that we had an eleven million dollar gap, that we had an E P A grant. Um, that was, uh, part of the program and that department is gone. It just doesn't exist anymore. All those people were, uh, terminated by email. Their emails were terminated, their phones were shut off. So, uh, we were never notified, but they're gone. So we've got that, uh, eleven million dollar gap down to about two million dollars. So, uh, through a number of, uh, creative ways, we found nine million dollars. We are now working with the city of Brockton on their contribution. Uh, they have been very good. Um, we have to nail them down on it. You know, where, where are we at the end? But they have been very good to work with. Um, and, uh, the state has been very good, uh, H L C, uh, Housing in Living Communities. Um, this is a very unique time because of what's happening in Washington. Many of these affordable housing, uh, projects have those type of funds, federal funds that flow through into them. And they have gone. Um, so, but, uh, I have to say that, uh, thank goodness for our partners in Cambridge. Uh, they are, they are creative, they are well versed. Um, and, uh, again, thank God for the, uh, the city of Brockton and their willingness to work with us. They're excited about it. That's it for me. Thank you, sir.
We need, and a second on item thirteen?
Second.
So moved. She's second there, so. A motion has been made by Commissioner Carol Roberts, seconded by Commissioner Janet Trask. Motion is to accept the Executive Director's Report. And put on file. Any questions or discussion on the motion?
Who's invited to attend these programs? Is it only employees or if it, residents? Have a particular concern or interest about, um, women's issues? Are they able to attend any of these trainings?
We, we've done that different, uh, Janet, the V A W, and we haven't done it in a while, but, uh, she's very willing to come in, uh, uh, Family Community Resources. Uh, has come and done training in the past with our tenant associations. They've also done it with our maintenance people because our maintenance people are so often in the apartments that have seen that. And the, the most difficult thing with, uh, you know, what we consider. Traditional domestic violence, I'll call it, is that the victim hides it. And so the training is on how to recognize it, how to get a person feel comfortable to say it because. Oftentimes, especially in public housing, the abuser is living there illegally. Right? They're not supposed to be there. So it, it becomes a very complicated process. And, and as I said, the, the training is in depth. Um, and, but yes, for the residents, we, we have done that and Pat Keller, her, has recently said she'd like to come in and do it again.
I think it would be nice if we could do it too. As, as commissioners.
Your, your commissioners are always willing and we can make sure just the commissioners are notified. I don't know if you want to sit through the recertification training, the three-day recertification training.
No.
Yeah, yeah.
On the, but yes, absolutely. We can notify you of those type of things.
Any other questions? Or discussion, Carol? There will call, Mr. Tibo?
Commissioner Trask?
Yes.
Commissioner Roberts?
Yes.
Mister Chairman?
Yes. Motion carries. Item fourteen, old business. Is there any old business? There ain't none. Item fifteen, new business. Any new business?
I have one item, Mister Chairman, if I could.
Yes.
The October meeting is scheduled for October twenty-third. That's a Thursday. Um, my wife and I celebrate our, we're October twenty-fourth, uh, wedding anniversary and we're going away. At that time, and I was wondering if we would be able to move the meeting one day earlier to Wednesday, October twenty-second.
Should be fine, should be fine. You guys plan ahead.
What's the twenty-third listed?
Well, people, so you don't even have to change it. Um, but I did want to let you know as, as much.
Two o'clock here?
Two o'clock here, yes.
Yeah, thank you, thank you.
Item sixteen.
Can I just ask one more thing too, as far as new business? Do we ever do scholarships or anything like that for people who die? Like with, with our officer, who was such a great guy, um, Richard. Uh, uh, did he work with the families at, at Roosevelt Heights and, and the young people? To, if there's something we could do as a body to, to set up a scholarship in his name?
Let, let us, uh, look into that and I can bring you back a recommendation. We do have one scholarship right now that was a ten-year period, Mister Flup. Uh, that is in Mister Serge's name. By, by the Southeastern Mass Affordable Housing Corporation. Um, so let, let, um, let us look into that and we will report that to you.
But he did work with families, correct? And, and, and.
Took it a whole.
He, he, he grew up in, um, it's actually, he, he grew up for a period of time, uh, at Ros, um, Crescent Court.
Yep.
Ah.
It was really bad.
Good idea, Janet.
Do I have a question?
Why?
Are we looking for someone, uh, someone in particular?
We, no, I do not have anybody in particular. I do not have a name, but we are, are going to be looking for it. Um, I've been contacted by many people. Um, it's a very difficult position to do well. Uh, if it's not done well, it doesn't serve the residents well. Uh, and they have to be both sides. They have to be stern, and it needs to be stern to address an issue. And they have to be empathetic, um, and, and understand, um, when that takes it. And that's a very unique thing. We have had, and I won't, won't name names, police officers who I've asked to be taken off. Because they were too stern. They could not see the other side. And then, um, others have seen this as a nice place to, um, tie. And so I'm being very, very frank. It's a very, it's one position. We miss it tremendously. Um, I have to tell you, Officer Pena, who is the, uh, officer in the neighborhood, he has been filling in, has been doing a great job. But he is a sector person. He's running all around. But he took care of something today at, uh, Cafretta with us. Um, but, uh, so we will, uh, look to fill it, um.
Yeah, Cafretta.
Put it out on the street.
We both recommended the same person. We both recommended the same person.
Oh.
Yeah.
Well.
You must have got the same phone call.
Uh, we'll see.
Any other questions for discussion? Item sixteen, adjournment. We need a motion and a second?
So moved.
Second.
A motion has been made by Commissioner Janet Trask, seconded by Commissioner Carol Roberts, and the motion is to adjourn. Don't leave yet. Roll call, Mister Tibo?
Commissioner Trask?
Yes.
Commissioner Roberts?
Yes.
And Mister Chairman?
Yes. Leading adjourn.
Thank you very much.